Property going in that particular position without a restriction on uses. Okay, and I will bring up to you two uses that sounded like they were permitted on there. One would be, how about a bail bondsman? Could a bail bondsman go in there and introduce lots of people in that area that could then go down Jamaica Way and say, well, you know, these are good properties to rob or something like that? How about a marijuana dispensary? It's a nice medical use and this kind of thing. Can we put a marijuana dispensary in that particular area? Again, all of these-
I'll answer that question when you're done.
I know, but I'm just saying, all of these would be potential negatives to the whole area associated with Jamaica Way. And I'm saying that commercial property on that thing without restrictions. Okay, you know, maybe a lawyer's office, something like that, that's fine. Let's put, then let's come in with a plan that says, I'm gonna put a lawyer's office in. Let's don't leave it wide open. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak, please make your way to this podium to my right. Please make your way. People that would like to speak on this rezoning, I need you to get up and walk over to the podium so you can get to the microphone and you can state your name and say that you've been sworn and get your three minutes.
Hello, my name is Paul Wasney. I have been sworn. My wife and I have lived on Jamaica Way for 28 years, since 1990. I'm probably as confused as everyone else about what has been said, but thank you very much for your clarification of the legal ramifications here. By the way, the Future Land Use Plan 2040, at least any document I could find, does not show this being changed. It only shows it as multifamily residential. It does not show this piece being rezoned to, basically, general commercial. If indeed you can restrict in some way legally, and it would appear that legally you've restricted it, that would make sense. This was, the whole presentation here is quite different from the May 29 meeting. On a strict basis, without the covenant, we would absolutely oppose this. And I think there have been many discussions about, about that. My statement, the May 29 meeting, I think is quite clear about that. So I'm frankly gonna leave it that way. If indeed this truly is restrictive in the way you stated, yes, it makes sense. And I thank the developer. I think that was very nice, and I wish we'd had all that at May 29. If you cannot restrict this, then, just like was stated, it's wide open. And the original rezoning, it was clear, would apply to the entire area. No, it's not, not just the corner. So unless you can restrict it and truly restrict it and forcible, you know, we would oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Reedy. I've been sworn in. I own a condominium next door on 1710 Jamaica Way. And I certainly would like to see the lot get developed. It's been sitting there for a long time, creating a problem for us. However, I do have some concerns in the size of the lot, and I don't quite see how you can put five, build five residences in such a small lot and take that chunk for commercial work on the end. I'm saying my parking lot is right here. Is there going to be a building right here, going up 35 feet, right next to the parking lot and creating this wall? You know, I'm just concerned that, how can you possibly put that many buildings? As I go down Henry, I see three houses for every block. There, you're talking about putting five houses in a small lot that's just about buildable for two or three houses. So, you know, my concern is, is what can, how can you do it and make this, you know, reasonable? I mean, we don't see any, anything, is the houses gonna be five feet apart? Is it gonna be five feet from the edge of our property? I mean, I don't, that's what my concern is. I don't see what they're doing here. And, you know, I'm kinda blind, and I think a lot of people here are kind of concerned about the unknown. It's not what we know, it's what we don't know and what could happen. So, you know, my feeling is, is that I would like to see some kind of drawing or something saying that this is what we're going to do, and this is how we're gonna put it, and this is how much space is gonna between each building, and how much parking, and where the, what the site plan actually is. And that's really all I have to say. Other than that, I really would like to see the property developed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please make your way to the podium. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak? Please line up, form a line over here to my right. To expedite the hearing, I would appreciate anybody else who would like to speak to make their way to the podium.
Hi, my name's Dave Backatier. I've been sworn. I'm a resident on Jamaica Way. And just wanted to bring to light a couple of concerns I had in this hearing today, and also to clarify some issues on understanding about the properties. One is, is that the properties that are adjacent, that are currently commercial, were commercial at the time that all of us who moved onto Jamaica Way purchased our properties. So there was no misunderstanding about what the property that's currently being developed are concerned about, about its use at the time. So the thought that somehow, that fact that the yacht club is there is commercial, and the firm across the street, I think it's Keller Williams, is commercial, was well-understood by all of us, including the model home, which I suspect will not stay commercial once it becomes owned by somebody. So this is a whole new change to a plotted land that was well-understood for use over many, many years. So I wanna make sure that there's not this misconception that this is something that we should have been understood, oh, just because it's commercial property across the street, that we should just accept it to being on our street. Because there is a difference between one side of that street and the other. Because one is obviously much more residential. The yacht club's been there since time immemorial. All of us moving onto that street understood the commercial impact of that property. The other thing that I would like to bring to your attention is that I think it's unfair in a hearing, that council is allowed to characterize neighbors with concerns. And I'm, I was not privy to the meeting, so I apologize, but I don't think in a public forum, neighbors with concerns should be impugned with the concept that they are calling somebody greedy, or that they have somehow a negative attitude that's brought to the council's discussion. This is a hearing. There are facts to be presented. Certainly appreciate the fact that the developer is trying very hard to produce a product that's gonna be a just, that would be more acceptable. But there are concerns. We bought that property 28 years ago. We knew what we were getting in. This is a whole new thing. Bigger concern I have also about a commercial property around that corner is, turn into that street sometime and see what happens when you have a blind corner coming in. And you're gonna have a building right up against it, so it's even more blind than ever. There's a lot of traffic that comes right out of that corner, especially if the yacht club's active. Just some concerns about the commercial use of that property. Other concerns are, does this open a floodgate for the next developer to come in and say, I know this was property designed for residential, but I want it for X? With all great intentions, but again, we open up this wave that we're gonna have the next meeting here discussing about this. So I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
My name is Deana Palumbo. I've been duly sworn. I live at 1750 Jamaica Way Condominiums. Okay, my husband couldn't be here, but he sent, he sent a letter, and he asked me to read it. He said, this property has been zoned residential for 30 years. It was zoned that way by our planners for a good reason. It's the best use of the property. I would submit to you that nothing has changed over these 30 years that would warrant a rezoning, especially one that would allow commercial occupancy. Over the years, as planned, Jamaica Way has been built up with a combination of condominium and residential housing. The neighborhood is absolutely lovely, and it is for this reason that my husband and I have moved here. And we call it home. I cannot imagine why anyone would entertain changing this dynamic now, after the fact. This is not planning, it's disrupting. We, the citizens of Punta Gorda, have a comprehensive plan in place to ensure, preserve the welfare, values, and desirability of our community. We all contribute to and applaud this effort. This rezoning proposal is contrary to our plan. And I would also reiterate what the previous speaker said. We are not here to judge people and say that someone is greedy. That's not an accurate description. We just have different objectives in mind. And to say that we, we are, to say that we have a negative opinion of the developer is not accurate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, ma'am, may I?
Yes.
Since this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and I know you've been sworn, are you going to adopt the testimony, the statement of your husband as your own testimony under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Eleanor and I have been sworn. I think the city attorney very adequately pointed out that the city council cannot take a look at what is being proposed to be developed there. They must take a look at what could be developed there. And what could be developed there is up to 10,000 square feet. A restaurant, with certain provisions, a bar, all sorts of things could be developed there. Once the zoning is changed, it remains in perpetuity with the property unless another rezoning takes place. So I want, neither, the council needs to very seriously consider rezoning. This is why it was done in a quasi-judicial setting. I feel like that when people buy property, I as a homeowner bought a property. I accepted what the city codes were, what the homeowners' associations required of me, what the restrictive covenants were on my property. And I abide by those rules. When a developer buys a piece of property in a zoned, multi-use family, then he needs to understand that is what the property is used for. We don't change the rules in the middle of the course. I can't go and open a restaurant on my city property, my home, unless I come and get a restricted, get an exemption granted by you. I don't think you're gonna exempt, gonna grant me that exemption to build, to turn my house into a restaurant. It would be very disruptive to my neighbors. The same with this particular piece of property. It is surrounded by residential, it was zoned multifamily, and it is to remain that way. And the city needs to take a careful look at all the permitted uses, and only the permitted uses when making their decision.
Anybody else? Please, yep, you're next, and then anybody else, please make your way.
So I wasn't here at the beginning, I guess I need to be sworn.
Yes, you do.
Anyone else who may decide now to provide evidence or testimony, please rise to be sworn by the clerk if they haven't already been done so.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Janice Fulman. I own one of the condominiums immediately adjacent to this property. And I just wanna agree, basically, with everything that has been said. I wanna specifically point out that the yacht club being a commercial use, but it is very much, it's quiet there, it's quiet in the evening, it is very, it almost resembles a residential use. And so it fits, to my mind, it fits rather well into the neighborhood. But that whole area is so residential, we, and we already have issues with traffic, it's true, when there is an event at the yacht club. I can only imagine the traffic issues there would be if there's a commercial development on that corner. And I think it's completely contrary to the feeling of the neighborhood. And as many people have said, I think all of us would be very, very upset about it. The traffic, yeah, someone should really do a study of that corner because it's already a rather unsafe corner. People are trying to cross, walkers, bicycles, and it's almost a blind corner as it is. And if you put a big building there, it's gonna be much worse. All right, thank you.
My name is John Grossenbacher. I live at 1750 Jamaica Way, and I have been sworn. My purpose in appearing before you today was to oppose this rezoning request, as my email to each one of you stated. However, after some discussion with Mr. Farhat on Tuesday, and his just-announced addition of a deed restriction on this property, I would withdraw my opposition and would support the application for an NC zone with the deed restriction noted. This compromise, I believe, preserves a residential neighbor of our Jamaica Way neighborhood and allows a property owner some reasonable, but not unlimited, flexibility. As I understand, the deed restriction will also stop potential future owners of this property from any other commercial development beyond what is envisioned in the deed restriction. I do understand the property was purchased under MC zone, and in consideration of adjacent property should remain MC zone. I understand that. But with the deed restriction, traffic impact as well as density will be less than a 13-unit condo on the same site. So I again believe this is a reasonable compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else after her, please make your way.
Hello, I'm Susan Zennowich. I am a resident. I live at 1940 Jamaica Way. My husband and I moved there a little over two years ago.
And you have been sworn.
I have been sworn.
Thank you.
While I do like the idea of having that property built on, I am concerned about a few things that I heard today. And I believe the developer, I really appreciate the guarantee and the intent. I too wrote to all of you and wanted to see the intent, although now I am concerned about what could happen in the future, based on what I heard today. I wanna voice two concerns, well, one common and one concern. The other areas, like where the 7-Eleven are, residents have alternatives to take a walk, ride a bike. Jamaica Way does not. It is a dead end. I have a dog. I walk my dog multiple times a day, and I walk him at night alone. And I have, the only option I have, he's a large dog, so I have to walk him far, is to walk up to that corner and back. And it is a blind corner, and even during the day, sometimes people whip around there, and I am nervous about walking my dog. So we don't have an option to do those kinds of things. Plus, it's a way to meet the people in your neighborhood, is people walk up and down that street and ride their bicycles, and it's how to meet people in the neighborhood. We don't have another option other than that street. And I am concerned about the traffic on that corner, how you would get in and out of that property in a safe way, without people, more people, driving down our street and around the circle to get out. So it is, there is some concern about the safety with traffic on that. I really like what I saw here today, but I, I'm not sure I'm willing to sacrifice that for the future and the safety. So those are my concerns.
Thank you.
My name's Jerry Janelle. I've been sworn in recently. I wrote a letter to the zoning board, and I think Ms. Lisa Hannan, is it, distributed it, so I don't need to talk to that. The Neighborhood Center District is intended to provide services to the daily needs of the residents in that area. Well, really, you know, in 22 years of living there, I've had a hard time finding anyone in a neighborhood that's deprived of any services. So, so if it's a case of doing the right thing for the city, and by providing a Neighborhood Center, you know, right there in that particular location, it just doesn't pass the smell test honestly. That's my two bits.
And just so you know, your letter was entered into the agenda item, Mr. Janelle.
Okay, thank you.
It was provided. Anybody else to speak on this? Anybody else to speak on Z-02-18?
Anthony Farhat, and I've been sworn. May I just make a couple of comments?
Sure.
Specifically to the, what I've been hearing here that has a level of consistency is that the fear of an overwhelming structure, and gentleman pointed out earlier that this hearing is much different than the Planning Commission meeting, and I think that's accurate. Essentially, what I wanna communicate is that this zoning will, will handcuff me to a 35-foot height restriction, and it will give me a farther restriction of buildable space off the seawall. That would be the Neighborhood Center zoning. Currently, as it relates to an imposing structure, we can currently build a very much imposing concrete structure that, that is 50 foot tall. So the zoning that we're proposing would actually limit that. So currently, we can go 50 feet, we're going to limit ourselves to 35 feet. The other thing I wanna say is, the reason that this hearing is different than the last hearing, is because the concerned residents caught our attention. And anybody that reached out to us that was a concerned resident, we did talk to. And, and we said, what is your major concern? And, and they mentioned things of, what if it's a 10,000-square-foot commercial building? What if it's a CVS? What if it's a restaurant? The reason we did the self-imposed deed restriction is to make it so you can't fit anything of that magnitude on the site. And I understand probably most people don't have a civil engineering background, but if you look at a site plan and you meet with a civil engineer, they will assure you, and we have one in the room, that it's not humanly possible to fit anything of any large scale on what we've restricted and handcuffed ourselves to. So the reason that the hearing's different is because we took the feedback of the concerned neighbors and, and wanted to do the right thing, so to speak. So that's why this hearing is a little bit different. And just so everybody knows, this does go with the title of property. So if I walk out of here, hopefully not, and get hit by a bus, no matter what, my heirs, anybody that buys this will have that embedded in the title. So I know that, that the lawyer explained it, and I'm a layman, and probably most of you all are as well. I mean, this is essentially a rule that is embedded in the property for eternity, unless the city changes something. Thank you.
The public hearing is still open, so let me make a last call. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this? Now would be your time. Have you been sworn, sir?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
My name is Don Cronin. I live on 1750 Jamaica Way. Been living there for eight years. And speaking of that corner, I almost hit two people as I came around those palm trees. That's about a year ago, and I, I still remember it. They were my friends, they were my neighbors. That's even worse. But beyond that, I think it's just ridiculous to have something like that go up in there. How do we know what's in that office? How are they, what is going to be in those offices? A Subway? A dressmaker? A hamburger place? We don't know. There's nothing more specific at all. That's what troubles me, and I imagine troubles all of these people around here. The cottage is, I don't know how they're gonna fit on there, because just to look at them, it's just impossible to look at, to see them fit on that property. Them alone, let alone the property, the commercial part. To be, all those lots down there, there are over a million-dollar houses we're talking about. Over a million-dollar house, and they're beautiful homes. This is destroying the whole area. I'm sorry, but it is. And I don't like it. And I know a lot of people in our condominiums that don't like it, and they never got over here, but to support this thing. But I am, and I'm getting sick and tired of having people coming in here and saying, oh, this isn't gonna happen, this isn't gonna happen, and then two weeks later, and two months later, or a year later, something else happens. Well, it's not gonna happen on our part, if we get up and speak, because this is terrible, I think. There can be a nice area there that can be completed in a nice way, but not that way. Commercial is out, for me, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call, last call. You want him to-
This will be part of your rebuttal?
Yes.
So let's hear from the public if there's any more members of the public, and then-
Okay, last call, members of the public to come speak on this. Okay, see none? You really have one, one turn? He didn't take the whole- I'll give you a two-minute discretion.
The applicant made some additional statements he might wanna respond to.
See these lots over here?
State your name again, sir.
I'm sorry, this is Jerry Janelle.
Thank you.
1710 Jamaica Way, over here. These lots right here are probably-
Jerry Janelle, I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
You have to speak into the microphone.
Huh?
You have to speak directly into the microphone.
Sorry. These lots are on about 250 feet of land along the road. They're gonna be wheeling out garbage cans twice a week, right on that little strip of land right there, right on that, right on that street. That we need to go, you know, that's access to our condo. So just picture that. If that was a multifamily, there'd be a dumpster there, they'd come over to pick up the garbage, that'd be one thing. That's gonna be a mess. Thank you.
Okay, that was the last call, so we need a motion to close?
No, it's part of the public hearing.
Oh, still? Okay, all right.
Oh, my goodness.
We're not gonna close yet. The rebuttal, okay.
For the record, Gary Bain with Southwest Engineering, and I have been sworn. Preliminary looking at the, the site layout, when we looked at the commercial, the residential components, especially the commercial, when you look at the commercial and the size of the building that's, that is shown there, it's about an 1,800-square-foot building, and the most I can get is nine to 10 parking spaces. When you start looking at what types of businesses can, would want nine to 10 parking spaces, it's not generating a lot of traffic. If I were to put in a 14, 15-unit condominium, would generate more traffic than that. So the traffic actually has been reduced in that location. Things that, that are not shown on here are stormwater. Those things prohibit properties from expanding greatly. Rule of thumb in engineering, when you look at acre, a one-acre site to a five-acre site, the most you can put on there is 5,000 to a 7,000-square-foot building. When you look at what the restrictive covenants have done, I mean, this is very, very small. The, the intent of this is more of a, kind of a office, maybe a boutique or something like that, probably not open late, late at night or anything like that. But the residential components of driveways, everything fits, if you see how everything is laid out, there isn't, the new style of houses are kind of shortened width, but longer in development. Anthony did a great job in showing you his, his, his vision for the properties, and I think it looks pretty good. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Close it now?
Again, Jerry Waxler, I'd just like to answer some of the comments that were made. I would never presume to know what someone sitting in a room, a public hearing, is going to say. My comments and my characterizations about the opponents was not based on what I thought would be said here, but based on actual emails that were sent to you. The terminology "greedy developer" and the characterization of people as opponents was taken directly from those emails that were sent to you. And I want to be sure that the room understands that, that those terms were used, and that's why I used them in my presentation. Mr. Farhat did point out, because there were concerns about the, the solid wall that would be developed on this property. The rezoning actually places greater limitations on what would be developed on this property. It reduces the height from 50 feet to 35 feet. It increases the setbacks, from, the rear setback, from 20 feet to 25 feet. And because we are proposing single-family, it would create view corridors between the buildings that you would not have if you had a monolithic condominium building. But most concerning to me is the sentiment that I heard, and that I have heard now over and over again at city hearings, that this was the zoning that was in place when I bought the property, and it should always stay that way. Zoning was never intended to be something that is in place forever. Your zoning document has been amended multiple times. You just amended it today to create a new use in your commercial district, a new ability for a special exception in commercial. It needs to be able to be modified in response to changing conditions. Now, I was here 30 years ago. I've been in Charlotte County for 34 years. And I can tell you that 30 years ago, there was not the level of traffic that you see now at this intersection. 30 years ago, this was not a signalized intersection. Things at this corner- Things at this corner have changed, and that change is one of the things that is giving rise to this request. Your zoning code contains a process for changing zoning for a reason, because you need to retain that ability. You need to allow for properties and things to change over time. Your downtown today looks nothing like what it looked like thirty years ago, and it will look different thirty years from now, and you need that ability to change with the times. Courts have repeatedly said that zoning is not a contract. No one can rely on zoning, even the owner of the property, because there have been cases where a property owner purchased a piece of property because of the zoning, had the zoning changed by the local government, and was told, "You can't rely on the zoning that's on that property, unless you have done something more in reliance." If there's a building up there, that's different, but a vacant piece of property. And that seems to be an ongoing misunderstanding in the city. And the other thing that I want to address is that the decision on whether to rezone is based on substantial competent evidence presented to you, measured against specific factors that are identified. One of those factors is not, "Do the neighbors want this to occur?" I'm not saying that you should not take that into account, that you don't consider it. You are elected officials, and I understand that you think about those things. But your legal duty is to look at the request against those factors and against the testimony that you have had. You heard from our engineer about what can and cannot be developed on the site, about how limitations on parking, limitations on the amount of square footage that can be developed because of stormwater management and the need for parking, are going to limit the types of uses that can be placed on the site, that the size of the buildings, which will limit the types of uses. You heard from your professional planning staff that this is consistent with your comprehensive plan and meets the requirements that you set forth for a rezoning. You have my application, which contains an exhaustive analysis of consistency with the comp plan, and which also addresses the compatibility and the consistency with your Though you may not consider it in your decision, because you must only look at the factors, this property is now limited to what can occur and where it can occur. That limitation runs with the property and will be binding not just on my client, but on anyone to whom he would sell the property. At some point, common sense has to come into play. I understand what your code says. I understand the list of uses. I understand that, yes, technically, you could put a bail bondsman on this corner. But really, is anybody really gonna put a bail bondsman on this corner? Is my client, who's going to have, by deed restriction, residential uses behind this commercial, going to put, allow a bail bondsman to be on this corner? Common sense has to come into play. But most importantly, the evidence has to come into play. And the evidence that has been presented to you overwhelmingly supports approval of this project, and that's what I ask for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we close it now?
Yes, you may.
Okay. We can close the public hearing now.
Move to close public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie unanimously. I would just like to disclose that I have talked to developers several times as of a year ago, possibly. This project is what has come to light. He's been consistent about the project that he's put forward, which you see, have seen today. Did have conversations with him just, you know, this week on the deed restrictions that he had planned to impose, so I just wanted to disclose that I've had, I have had those conversations.
I have as well.
I have as well.
I have as well.
And we have all received every copy of the objection letters, and favorable and unfavorable emails have been copied to all city council members, some of which have been entered into the agenda packet.
And let me just also continue on my civics lesson.
Okay.
The law does, the law...
Tick tock.
The law does allow for the individual council members to speak one-on-one with anyone, members of the public, members of the applicant. But I will, I will also say that the rules of the game are that the decision that's being made must be made based on the evidence and testimony presented today. So I know the city council members are aware of that, and for your benefit, you should now be aware of that as well.
Thank you. Lisa, could you just speak really quickly to, if this were to be approved, the process that the applicant or whoever develops the property would have to go to to actually get the building permits and, and make sure the setbacks are met and all of that?
This, excuse me, Lisa Han, and zoning official, they will go through the development review process, which is staff-level review for all technical reviews, meaning stormwater setbacks, architectural provisions, anything that restricts this zoning district, and it goes through staff-level review. It's about a four-to-six-week process, and then it can, if they meet all the requirements and get the sign-offs, they can move forward for building permit. If I could make a, one quick comment, bail bondsman office would not be permitted in this zoning district neighborhood center, because it is specifically listed as a permitted use in other zoning districts, but not in the neighborhood center zoning district. So that would not be one that would be permitted.
Um, one is guaranteed the rights and privileges of the zoning in which the property lies, not guaranteed that the property owned by other people is gonna be zoned exactly the way forever. In the historic district, where my great-grandparents' house was on Olympia, it was residential. All of Olympia, east of forty-one, is now commercial. Rezoning is a normal process and evolution of a city. Well, one thing, by right, the developer, as of now, can build a multi-story building fifty-foot over, over flood. Doesn't have to come to us to build on this property, and, which means a building will be on that property. Simply opposing a building doesn't mean there's gonna be no building there. It means there will be a building, and the question is, do we, is it gonna be a development which is gonna be in our best interest? On this note, with staff, staff has determined that this building will not cause any more impacts, possibly even less impacts, than what he by right can build right now. With that said, developer's coming with a rezoning request that is consistent with the future land use element of a comp plan, and I move for approval with, with the recommendations of the staff.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
This is a tough one.
It's...
Yes.
Yeah, it is tough. I listened to the, the testimony presented today, and I understand the changing needs, and I, I reflect on that property and how the Isles Yacht Club has changed in its, in its presence on Jamaica Way, since it has expanded its facility and is the, now the banquet center for many organizations to hold events there, and the parking issues that can persist. And also understand that as the community has evolved, what, there may not have been a signalized intersection there. It creates a problem in that corner, is to, who would build something that's residential at that corner when there's so much traffic right by it? So I, I think what, I look at what is potentially viewed as a buffer, as you will, if you will. So it's trying to ponder this, and with respect to the residents, and understand the nature of the, of the neighborhood. It certainly appears that this would be a much less intense use.
Yes.
Much less intense use than if there were thirteen condominiums there. Actually, the homes would be much more characteristic of something that might be built along Jamaica Way as opposed to, the rest of Jamaica Way as opposed to the condominium buildings, so...
I mean, for me, I definitely see the, the setbacks as a definite advantage for the neighbors, the height of the buildings especially. I know we're not, the site plan is not part of the conditions here, but it's been consistent. What we've been shown all along has been very consistent, and the person is very established and has built many, many beautiful homes in Punta Gorda Isles. I used to live on Lewis Circle, which is not too far from this area, and behind me was the professional building. And for those of you who were here before Hurricane Charlie, you can realize that there was a whole bunch of commercial buildings, of big, pretty much like a strip plaza, of dry cleaners, may have been a bank in there. What she's, what else was in there?
Nail salon.
Nail salon. A hair salon.
Law office.
Law office. And it was basically a catty corner from, from this property, and it was convenient. I mean, that's where I used the dry cleaners there all of the time, and I did utilize those businesses that were there. And, you know, I, that was twenty-plus years ago, and that's, that's not there. Hurricane Charlie took that down. But just living in that area at the time, I didn't, the traffic didn't really affect my daily life. So from my experience living over in that area, when there was even more commercial activity, I, I still loved it. So I, I am happy about the deed restrictions. I think the other thing that is lost is that people do come here after the planning commission, and then they come to the city council meeting, and they get upset that things have changed. But that is really the process, and from what we've heard is that they did listen. They did meet with concerned neighbors, and that's really what the process is all about. So I want to commend them for going that extra, extra mile in meeting with the people that were concerned. And of course, you know, after we listened to, or saw the minutes from the planning commission, I believe some of you attended, they did have legitimate concerns, and most of that has been addressed in my, in my opinion.
I would agree with all of that, Rachel. I sat in on the planning commission hearing, and I think part of the problem at the planning commission hearing is that there were no photos or the renderings of what this project was gonna look like, because essentially, they were only able to vote on the actual rezoning request, and that was it. And, and we should be doing that, too. However, since the applicant has brought forward the, what he plans to do on the property, I have had numerous conversations with Mr. Farhat. I had a couple of meetings with some of the citizens that live in South Winds, and, and I'm confident that most of the questions and concerns have been addressed. I know Mr. Farhat is a very reputable gentleman, and very, he's, he's, he's a good guy, and I have to give him the benefit of the doubt that he's not going to go back on his word, and he's given us every indication that he plans to be here for the duration, and that he would like to be a good citizen in the community. He has beautiful projects, as Rachel stated. He's, he's done a lot of great projects in the city, not just in PGI, but all throughout the city of Punta Gorda and beyond. And he, he, I, I believe that he's a man of his word, and I, I happen to think this project is a beautiful one. I think that once these buildings are built, all the, all the questions and concerns will go away very quickly, because I think you're gonna see it's a beautiful product. I also did suggest to him that he might consider, rather than a commercial building, that he might consider putting an amenity for the five houses on that corner. If that becomes a, if, if it becomes a really major problem, and they can't find a business that they would like to put in there that's a good fit, that perhaps they could do a pool, a common area pool, or a clubhouse, or something like that. Having mentioned that, we talked also about the fact that that would involve an HOA, and that might be another, a whole different set of problems. So I don't know what he's going to put on that corner, but I, I'm confident that it's not gonna be something that's going to stick out like a sore thumb in the community. I think he's, I think he's better than that, and, and I, I really think that this project warrants approval.
And on that note, what you're saying about the amenities, really, right across the street at the Isles Yacht Club, you have pretty much anything you could, you could really want or need.
That's true.
I mean, I know it's a community pool, but still, it's a very beautiful facility.
Yep.
You know, as I reflect on this as well, I, I think about my own neighborhood in Burnstour Isles, and what has come before us. It's been before the planning commission, been before council, and that is properties along Madrid. And we had to do some soul-searching about our, those, the properties where they are actually zoned, general multifamily, fifteen units per acre. But we, the reality is that these properties that are across from the shopping center are not necessarily perhaps the most optimum place for the residential properties. So we did, this was under a special exception, but we did, under a special exception, approve a use that was a commercial use, but it was low-impact, and it would generate less traffic. And the neighborhood actually supported it, because we, we looked at the reality of the situation, and we said, "Things have changed. It's not what it was, even though it's platted that way, it doesn't mean that it's working out the way it was plotted to be." So I think, you know, as I'm looking at this, I'm, I'm really listening to the residents that live along Jamaica Way and trying to understand, and how can we do something that is gonna be a win-win opportunity?
Yes.
I think that this is gonna be a new product for Punta Gorda that really is, I think, is also personally find quite attractive. It's a little bit different than what has typically been offered in, in, in our area. I think that is seeing into what's, things are gonna be like in the future, far-reaching in that way. I understand the odd aspect of this little piece that he would like to make commercial. I find this particular developer is going the extra mile to temper the concerns of the citizens, and we've heard some individuals who, after hearing the testimony today, expressed that that was, and that he has been open to discussing these with them. So I have a feeling that this negotiation isn't fully done with the neighborhood yet, within, with reason. I think there'll still probably be some tweaking. This is an entrepreneur who is bringing a, exciting new product to Punta Gorda, in a place where it fits, an upscale product, on an upscale lot, with a lower impact than a cookie cutter product would have. I, I think that wasn't used, but I think that's the point, is, is there could be a cookie cutter product here that wouldn't fit as well as the way this particular area is developing. And so with that, I have to say that I, I've had this conversation, really, a couple of years. He's been very consistent in what his vision was he wanted to do it, but it finally has coalesced, I think, just in the last few days to, for the, for many people in the neighborhood. And I think that this would be a, a very good accoutrement to the area, and as one of the residents said, "We'd like to see this property develop." It's been standing fallow for, since Charlie, and it's, and it's, would be a good addition to, to put that finishing touch to the area.
Lisa, just to clarify, because I've lived in multifamily, and we always had the regular garbage service, dumpster versus garbage can on multifamily. Is it the, the development choice, or...
Yes, ma'am, it's the choice of the developer on whether they want can service or dumpster service.
Okay, so it's not necessarily you have to have a dumpster on any multifamily?
That is correct. There are some out there that would prefer can service.
Okay, thank you. With that, we have a motion, and we have a second, correct? Jaha made the motion, and Gary seconded it. So I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carrie unanimously.
I would just like to say, I hope Liam learned something this morning.
You're gonna have to tell Liam, he can only come to one meeting a year. We are gonna need to take a health break now. It's ten forty-nine. We will come back at ten fifty-seven. I need more than five minutes.